In April, after the election, I think we all took an opportunity to thank Selectmen Chris Hotling for his service to the town. I know that we were hopeful to have Chris here to thank him publicly, but I know from speaking to him that his work schedule has made that extremely difficult. We didn't want this to linger on any further, so it was decided to move forward with the preparations for the items to commemorate his service. Knowing Chris, we decided he wasn't ready for the traditional rocking chair that the town uses, so we went with a very nice commemorative clock and a very nice action photo of Chris addressing Memorial Day ceremonies. So I just wanted to take a special thank you to Betty for using her creativity to sort of put that together. I know she likes to do arts and crafts types of stuff, and I think she did a great job.
I found that out.
I think it came out very nicely, so kudos to Betty for that.
Thank you. So before I get into the Selectmen speaking, I do have a plaque here for Chris. It's a picture of Chris for the TV cameras and anybody that can see it, speaking. It's presented to Chris E. Hotling by the Office of the Board of Selectmen and Town Administrator on behalf of the Town of Burlington and all its citizens in appreciation for your years of dedicated service and tireless efforts on their behalf. So, Chris, I don't know if you're watching or not, because we will run a little bit late, but this is a plaque that we had made for you. I definitely will get a few, and I would like to also say we have a clock. It says, "Chris E. Hotling, Board of Selectmen, 2013 to 2019," which can either go on your desk or on your kitchen table, and your wife can look at it every day. So, gentlemen, these are the things I will pass out to Chris. Once again, I'd like to thank Chris. Guys, would you like to say anything? I know we've all said quite a bit about Chris already. Does anybody have any more comments?
I would like to just also recognize Betty for not only this, but for actually all the little annoying things that we bother you with day in and day out. I know I-
I've got a good staff behind me.
-on top on your list there.
And Chris, we're gonna miss Chris. He's gonna be a great Selectman, too.
Well, thank you. Nice job on that. Anybody else?
No, I just, you know, Nick, forgive us for saying that, you know, Chris was a great guy to work with. He and I had six years together, and I remember us talking about him deciding to run at a January town meeting, and we had long conversations then and lots of conversations since, so he's missed.
He certainly is missed. The one thing I used to tell him, and just because it was told to me, is my wife said that he was her favorite Selectman, so.
We'll have to talk to your wife about that, won't we?
But he will be missed. He's a great guy.
All right. Gentlemen, I'd like to say thank you. Before I end, Betty, I was in your office when you were doing this, and I was like, "God, she loves doing this." You know, it was pretty amazing. So, thank you. Thank you.
Chairman, just one more thing, so I don't get sued for copyright infringement, but I believe that's one of Rich Hosford's pictures there, so I just want to make sure he gets the-
Oh, really?
...proper credit for that-
Thank you very much.
...photo that we ended up using. We're usually pretty good about saying where we got pictures, but we didn't think photographed by Rich Hosford would look great on the plaque, so we skipped it on this one, so hopefully you'll forgive us.
I don't think it's not on the bottom of this, is it?
Trademark on the guy.
Photograph by.
And send him out again to the magic with the clock and-
All right. Thank you. Okay, moving right along. Paul?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, we have Chief Ken here for a couple of appointments. First up, we'd like to appoint retiring patrolman Ed Mackey as a special police officer. Congratulations to Officer Mackey on his retirement. You know, I'm fortunate to have gotten to know him a little bit recently during collective bargaining, but I know that he is universally well-liked and respected within the department, so I know we're very happy and hopeful that he has a great retirement, but we're also very sad to see him leave. So, I don't know if the chief wants to add anything on to that.
Yeah, just to reiterate, Eddie was here almost thirty-four years, started at twenty-one, so, you know, basically his whole adult life has been being a Burlington Police Officer. Eddie was Badge One, Senior Patrolman, did a great job day in and day out, great guy to be around, knew this town, you know, any of you guys that know him. He knew every family in this town, every issue, and handled it with, handled issues with a lot of grace and dignity and always putting the people he was dealing with first. He's just a top-notch guy. Luckily for us, he will be around, assuming his appointment as a special to help out during our busy season, so I expect you July fifth.
Thank you, Chief. And with the chief's recommendation, I hereby appoint Edward Mackey to the position of Special Police Officer in the Burlington Police Department and request that the Board of Selectmen waive the standard fifteen-day waiting period.
I'll make that motion.
Second. All right, Jim. Second by Mike. All those in favor?
Aye.
Can I just follow up on that?
Yeah, absolutely.
I believe it. Correct me if I'm wrong. Is it the little reception this Wednesday at noon at Grandview? Is that correct?
Thursday.
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 Thursday, Thursday at Grandview, at noon time.
Yeah.
Honoring Ed's time at the town.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
And I'm just gonna add real quickly that one of your officers that is retired, Mr. Mackey, had a smile on his face twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. He could've went to the building burning, he was like, "Yep, it's burning. Let's do something." He was just one of the greatest guys around. He still is. I'm not saying he wasn't, but you know what I mean? He's just a happy-go-lucky, easygoing, very friendly person. So, I'd like to thank Ed for all his time.
If I could just follow up, I can honestly say I don't think I've ever seen him angry.
Yeah, I want to.
No, but he's a great guy.
He is.
No, I'm good.
All good? Everything's good? Okay. So, motion's made, seconded, voted on. We're good. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Next up, we also have an administrative appointment within the department. We had another very extensive hiring process and a very large candidate pool that produced several great candidates, and the chief's here to tell you that we have selected a candidate he would like to appoint to the Administrative Assistant One. Chief, you have anything?
Yeah, as the Town Administrator mentioned, we started with, I believe, eighty-three candidates applied. That was paper screened down to seven who were interviewed. Three were pushed forward to myself and the captains for an interview, and all three were very good. Selected was a Peola Harlow, who's a young lady that currently works at Oracle in Burlington, is an administrative assistant in real estate and facilities. She's been there since September of 2015. She's a native of Brazil and has a business administration bachelor's degree from a university in Brazil. Very, I think she'll be a good fit with the department, very smart girl, and I think it'll be a good hire. I recommend that she be hired.
Thank you, Chief. I'm not sure if that's how you pronounce that first name. You don't typically get them right, but that's what I'm gonna use for the appointment. So, with the chief's recommendation, I hereby appoint Peola Harlow to the position of Administrative Assistant One in the Burlington Police Department and request that the Board of Selectmen waive the standard fifteen-day waiting period.
Second.
First, the second. We, all in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero, zero, all in favor?
Is she here tonight, chief?
No, she couldn't make it. She's actually wanted an extra week or two with Oracle to give them enough notice, so doing the right thing with her company. She's leaving, so she's still with them.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, just one thing. Kudos to you, chief, and I've said this a number of times. When you have, what, eighty-three or eighty-six people apply for an administrative position, then there's a reason people want to come work at the Burlington Police Department, even if they're not police officers. I congratulate you for the leadership that you've taken on there.
Well, I appreciate that. You know, it's great having a large field. The bigger the field to start with, the better person you're gonna end with at the end, so I appreciate that.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Chief, did you wear the special hat tonight for us, or is that just...? Okay, I couldn't see the front of it, just keeping up with Mr. Petron. Just keeping up with Mr. Petron, that's all.
He rested, Pete.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, we have Jim Powers from our audit firm here for our annual financial wrap-up for fiscal year eighteen. The Board will be very happy to know that this information was already reviewed in detail by the town's Audit Committee, so that you have the comfort of knowing that these reports were already presented to a group of highly skilled individuals with a ton of experience in this area. The audit is certainly one part of my old job that I won't miss very much, and I'm happy to turn it over to John. With that, I'll turn it over to Jim Powers for a brief, Jim, brief, brief review and to answer any questions the Board may have. John D'Nizio is here, as well as Brian Curtin, the financial team, for any questions that the Board may have, so.
Thank you, Paul. Gentlemen.
Before Jim starts, I just wanted to take a minute to acknowledge and recognize the Audit Committee for their time and effort in reviewing these financials. It's not easy. It's dry. You gotta have a love for it to do it, so I just want to make sure we recognize them. And that Audit Committee is made up of eight members, and it's chaired by Gary Giannino. Its vice-chair is Susan Harrigan, who represents the Ways and Means Committee. Mr. Tickus represents the Board of Selectmen. Tom Murphy represents the School Committee, and there are four other at-large members, who are John Bergeron, David Kelly, Sal Mansudo, and Eileen Sickler. And some town financial personnel is involved. Brian's there, myself, and Nicole Caushia from the School Department, so.
Thank you.
We're good? Okay, brief. Thank you, John. Thank you, Paul. Overview, like Paul said, like John said, having an Audit Committee really helps to really dig into depth all the issues that we have. Those meetings go an hour, an hour and a half, several times a year that we go through in detail, you know, the hundred-and-fifteen-page reports and the management letter and all the suggestions and where we're going for improvement. So, obviously, this is, we won't be doing this again. We finish this back. The way it normally goes, we come out in the springtime, do some preliminary work, do some single audit work, and then we come back in in the fall, get the rest of the audit, take the numbers from John and his staff, put everything together. Like usual, a lot of cooperation from Treasurer's Office, Collector's Office, and school. Everybody else is very helpful in the audit, and we're hired to complete, in effect, and give opinions on three reports. One is the Management Letter. Without going into detailed depth, most of the issues in the Management Letter have been addressed this year. One of the things that we do is we follow up in our spring meetings, and so even though we had some bigger issues and material weaknesses at the school last year, we believe those are resolved and will make our final determination on that come the fall, but I think we're in good shape. And Nicole, as you mentioned earlier, has done a fantastic job changing a lot of processes and accountability over there, so I don't think we're running into the issues that we did last year on that. You have a federal single audit report. The town receives about a million and six a year and spends that. Most of that's school-related. We have to do compliance auditing on that. We had one minor finding, just a report filed a little bit late, filed. Nothing wrong with the report. Everything was correct. They just didn't hit the federal deadline with the state. Again, I believe that was kind of a one-time shot, that they just missed that. Again, there was a lot of transitional last year and the year before, as you went through that, so that probably was the reason. And then there's the financial statements. Financial statements, we don't audit to give you a report on how your financial condition is, is whether or not the financial statements as prepared by your staff is accurate and fairly presents the financial position, results of operation of the Town of Burlington. But besides that, the report does give an unqualified audit opinion on that, meaning that everything you find in there, we've audited, the numbers are good. You do have a healthy fund balance position, especially in the general fund where it's important. Have almost, at the end of last year, almost nine million dollars worth of stabilization fund, in addition to over thirty-four million dollars worth of general fund reserves on a hundred-and-forty-five million dollar budget, excellent financial condition. Two things that we've talked about before, and the town has taken to address the other post-employment benefits, you have a, you know, a hundred-plus-million-dollar liability there, but you're putting money aside in the OPEP trust. You had over six million dollars at the end of last year in there, and so that's more than a lot of other places as you go through that. And the last final big piece for an unfunded liability, and obviously you balance that out, is with the retirement side. There's a funding plan in place at Middlesex Retirement System, kind of retirement system that you remember of. Your liability there is about a hundred and seventeen million dollars. It's being worked on, and we expect that over time, you know, that deficit wasn't created in a year. Then you have until, up to 2040 legally to fund that, and I believe the retirement system is aggressively trying to knock years down on that. I forget where the years-
Two thousand and thirty-five.
Two thousand and thirty-five, so you have a lot of leeway either way, and the fifteen years or so, or the sixteen years to get there, it comes quick. So, those are the two biggest issues. But outside of that, you know, your financial statements are in good shape, so that kind of gives you an overview of what we found as part of that. Do you have any questions? I can certainly address those. If not?
Thank you. I don't have any questions, because this is my fourth year, I think, going through this, and every year it amazes me how well we turn out. I used to thank Paul, but now I'm gonna thank these two gentlemen up here. The guys have been great. The committee came out good. The town's in great shape. The town's in really good shape, you know, so all I can say is thank you. I really don't have any questions, but I'm gonna turn it over to the rest of the Board. Paul?
Yeah, short of everything being fine, I do have a question. First of all, I want to commend Brian, John, Paul. We got accountants heavy at the top, which is a good thing, but I always like to pat the department heads on the back for the work they do to stay within the guidelines and to help us make all of that happen. My question has to do with the framework in assessing and improving cybersecurity.
Yeah.
Based on where we are at the very beginning of this process, do you see us going in the right direction?
Yes, the MIS department actually had a pretty good plan in place that they went through, trained their staff on different expertise. Inside of that, there's different things you can take a look at. No one's perfect, but you were addressing it, but we thought, we put this Management Letter point in every one of our clients because of what we see happening around, you know, we've had several clients that it's simple, it's something as simple as calling up, or sending an email that says, you know, "Jim Powers, you know, that I work at, you know, Burlington." Well, they change the O to a zero, a small zero, and it looks like Jim Powers, but it isn't. It's a different email address, and they say, "Please change my routing number and my bank account for my direct deposits." It's happened, I know like fifty communities it's happened in, those type of things. So, simple things that you don't think, and all of a sudden the employee realizes, two paychecks later, and their mortgage bounces, is that somebody had taken their money. It's not a question of if you'll get hit, be attempted, it's when, but I think the MIS department's doing a good job and staying on top of that before we were really bringing it up.
I'd like to comment, Paul, about that, just in regards to what Jim was saying. I just recently, as a matter of fact, the last week, contacted the major banks that we do business with, because there's been a lot of, you know, emails going around about people's payroll getting scammed and similar to what Jim was just mentioning. I've put in with Century Bank, who is a depository bank for payroll and tax collections and so forth, a positive pay program and an ACH program, that anything that looks suspicious, they would call my office and speak to either me directly or my assistant to make sure if anything gets debited out of any of our accounts or taking out that it's a legitimate entry. Also have done that with our vendor account, Rockland Trust. So, I just sent, signed agreements within the last week to take care of that, because it's something that's been fairly knowledgeable. It's going around and happening everywhere, so we're trying to do everything we can to make sure that we don't get hacked. Like Jim says, you can't be a hundred percent sure that you'll never have an issue like that, but we're doing everything on our end to try to prevent that.
Thank you, Brian. And just looking at some of the main areas of review in the risk assessment, there's a lot of ways in the back door.
Paul, I've had places that can get, you can get through your telephone system now, okay? You can get it, and because it's hooked up, a lot of times you have your telephone system part of your IT network. Somebody has your phone number, you know, some people have, you're not using secure passwords, you know. You have password as your password. It happens, but MIS makes, you know, as you go through, change your password. It has to have, you know, a character, it has to have an asterisk, and it tells you whether it's strong or weak and those type of controls. It's just, it's just stopping them before you get in the door, and that's part of any fraud risk assessment, cybersecurity being one of those. If you leave the door open, people are tempted. Some people won't walk in, but if the door's open, they'll-
Other than that, I'm fine with the report.
Jim?
No questions. Jim and I had that same discussion about the email compromise and whatnot, but nothing gets your blood going other than seven-thirty a.m. morning on audits, but let me tell you.
Almost as big as cell towers.
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman. No, I'm good. No. I'll just say, you know, to echo what Bob was saying, you know, it was nice to see that you had cybersecurity in there, knowing that, you know, we're dipping our toe into this and, you know, how, just really how many ways there are into, you know, a system. And you're right, if the door is just cracked, they're gonna find it. And, you know, it's like getting rid of, you know, a pest in your house. As long as your house is sealed up, the mice can't get in. Don't leave the front door open.
A lot of our clients have addressed that, but there's a lot out there. Say you're at the top end of understanding that and prepping for upfront, as opposed to some of our other clients that they'll say, "All right, well, I guess we need to stop working on it."
I just want to thank the Board. This is a very important last step for the audit firm to address the Chief Executive Board. We've been fortunate to have good news at these conferences over the years, but if we weren't doing a good job with the finances or if there were serious problems within our operations, Jim's obligated to tell you guys, and that's what's so important about this, is that he comes to see you once a year, or more if necessary. He's always available to you if you have any questions, but he's independent of us, and whether he likes us or not, he's operating under professional guidelines to tell you how it is. So, that's why this is such an important event for us every year. It's the closeout of fiscal eighteen. We can sort of put this one, fiscal eighteen is a while ago now, so we can put that one in the rearview mirror, and they've already been out to start working on fiscal nineteen. But I just want to point that out for the Board and the members of the public at home. It really is an important last step for him to communicate directly to you guys, so thank you for listening.
I can say this. Thank you, because when I sat here four years ago, over here on this side, before I became the chairman, I used to sit there and listen. At my first meeting, I was like, "What the heck are they talking about? I have no idea." So, I finally got to understand a lot more after, what is it, five, four years now. So, all I watched you go through this whole thing, now I'm watching John go through this whole thing, and you've been incredible for what you've told us over the years. And I remember some of the stuff, it was like, you know, "This was good, but it could be this," or "This was good, and you guys are doing great over here." So, watch it grow after this amount of time, and we can thank Brian and his staff for a lot of that stuff that goes on, the cybersecurity that he just told us about, as far as the banks and stuff like that. These are things that an average person like me, nothing happened in my world, so it can happen in this world. Big difference. So, once again, I'm sure we've said it a thousand times, thank you, gentlemen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving right along. One-thirty.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next up, we're looking for a vote to accept the town's newly updated open space and recreation plan. See, Mr. Kelly is here, and I apologize.
Krista Moravec.
Is here also. This is a requirement for the town to do every seven years, to be eligible for grant funding at the state and federal level. As the Board may recall, we have received, been the recipient of some significant funding in the past, including about a half a million dollars for the Wildwood Park a few years ago. I hope when you have time that you'll read through the report. It's a very extensive document, eighty-eight pages, two-hundred-and-sixteen-page appendix. It's a result of a couple of years' work done by the committee. I'd like to also thank the residents that contributed at open sessions, and I'd like to recognize the committee members for their efforts, as well as staff members, John and Eileen from the Conservation, Brendan and Kelly from Recreation, Josh and Liz from Planning, Chris Hanafin, representing Disability Access Commission, Jennifer O'Reiden from the Conservation Commission, Jack Kelly from the Planning Board, and Christine Brown from the Rec Commission. So, kudos to those folks for their hard work. Open space and recreation opportunities, what we found is something that are important to our residents and to the business community. Like, everybody wants these type of opportunities available within Burlington. So, with that, I'll turn it over. If there's any questions, the Board, or if John has anything they want to add to that.
All did all the hard work. I mean, did a great job explaining it. Krista is from Horsey and Witten. She basically helped, basically ran the show, did all the organizing, all the writing and whatnot, organized all the meetings and the forums and the survey. Did a great job.
Thanks. I can offer some highlights, but if you had any questions, I could also go that route. Is there-
Why don't we start off with the questions, and maybe some of the highlights will be answered?
Okay.
How's that?
Sounds good.
So, I'm gonna start off the question with Mike. Would you like to take us off this time?
I have to confess, I had not read the hundred-and-eighty-page report, Mr. Chairman. I was hoping you would just give us the highlights.
You were busy this weekend. So, Nick?
I couldn't open my iPad. As honest to God, truth, Betty will confirm that. It's locked.
So, I only gave it a brief overview this weekend. It was one of the things I didn't get a full dive on. I look forward to reading it, truly, because anything that's that in depth, you know, it has to be covering. It's not, you know, all fluff, so. No, I'd love to hear the highlights, if no one has any questions.
Well, go with Jim.
I'm a highlight guy.
You're a highlight guy?
I'm a highlight guy.
You're a highlight guy? Moving down the line.
Actually, I participated with the Disability Access Commission, sitting in on the discussions, and some people came and talked with us about what they were looking for and giving us some direction, and then we pondered all of that for a couple of different meetings, and it was an interesting process, and hopefully the things we presented made sense to you guys, and I'm sure Chris made it sound presentable.
Absolutely. So, and to that point, so one of the components of the open space and recreation plan is to do an ADA self-evaluation, so looking at properties that are owned and managed by the Parks and Recreation and the Conservation Commission. So, we went out and visited, so Horsey and Witten went out and visited the sites and made some observations about barriers to accessibility, and we brought that back to the commission and talked with them, you know, did we get this right? Are we missing anything? And to prioritize improvements where they were.
Sometimes we see things and don't see something minor that a fresh set of eyes, to the point where the handicap, some of the handicap porta-potties were placed in such a way that they weren't accessible, and it was picked up during this audit period that we were able to make some corrections as to which way it faced, where it sat, how, you know, how you got to it.
How you got to it, right.
Yeah, yeah. And that was just that one small part of it.
One piece.
We probably had, what, three or four pages for Disability Access?
So, that plan, that's part of the large appendix, is that plan, because every site had about, there's a worksheet of about ten pages for each site, so that contributes to the large appendices. But if I could kind of offer you some, an overview of the plan. So, the town has conditional approval at this point till February twenty-six of the plan. Earlier this year, we had sent to, so the Division of Conservation Services is the approving agency. So, we had sent that to them earlier this year for a review to get their insight, and so they conditionally approved it at that time in February, and with some comments to address, which the version that you have have addressed those comments, so we're in good shape with that. But the, as the Town Administrator mentioned, you know, having an approved plan does make you eligible for funding, but it also, going through the process of updating it, helps you take stock of where you are, where you want to go, and how you're gonna get there. So, you can evaluate actions that weren't done, why should they be modified, and that sort of process. So, it's a good reconnection tool with your open space and recreation planning. There was a lot of public input. We, working with the committee with all its representation, we had a public workshop in February. We did a community-wide survey from August and September of last year, and got over a hundred responses. We did the meeting with the commission, the DAC. We also, so our attendance at our first public workshop was very small, so when we went back out- we went back out, uh, with our draft, uh, action plan, we did more of an open house and an online survey. So we set up boards, uh, in the library and in the rec department up for a month. People could, at the, uh, take a look at information, provide, uh, provide responses on a paper survey, or they could go online. And we had a very good response with that. Um, so it was just kind of adapting to, to get, uh, as much input as we could. Um, so the plan is, has a lot of inventory and a lot of detail, so I won't get into that, but just one of the important inventories is the open space and recreation inventory. So there's a little over a thousand acres of recreation land and, and open space land, and that's a mix of recreation, uh, conservation, also includes town, um, other properties like, uh, Landlock Forest and the, um, Mary P C Cummings Estate, uh, school, uh, playgrounds and, and, uh, ball fields and those types of things. There's also about seventy-five acres under conservation restriction. So that's sort of an important piece of the plan. Um, another important piece are needs. So one of the things, the important thing that comes out of it, we do all this public input, we look for the needs. And those are organized into three categories, natural resource protection, uh, community needs and management needs are, and the latter's sort of focused on what the town departments need to kind of make sure that, um, they're efficient and meeting, you know, the community needs. Um, and then there's a seven-year action plan. So that is, um, divided into different actions that address the needs, um, there's responsible parties, um, if there's a, a funding source associated with it, it will touch upon that as well. Um, is there any, uh, questions about kind of the structure of the plan, what's in it? Um, I'm happy to provide any, any, uh, responses to. There's detail, any questions about details that you're interested in?
Gentlemen, any questions? I think we're all good. I think that you did a great job, and I think that, uh, not only town financially is doing all good, but, would you say a thousand acres?
A thousand acres.
Between baseball fields and open space and landlocked forests, one of my favorite spots.
Was there anything surprising in there that you, you did not expect?
I, I can honestly say no. This is the third time I've done this plan since I've been here, so, um, I wasn't surprised by anything.
It was a very, um, the committee was great. It was great having representation from all the different departments and, and different committees. So we were able to have a lot of different perspectives. Everyone was at the table, so it was, it was a good process.
So one of the small things I'll ask John, so you get to walk all this property? Did you walk to, uh, all the conservation land that we have? And is that all part of this procedure we go through?
Um, no, not, actually, I didn't walk it as part of this. I mean, I certainly walked it all, most of them.
I was just kind of curious on how the tick population is this year.
Um, it's high.
Yeah, 'cause I was over there a couple of times with my dog, and I was like, that's it, I'm done.
Yeah, no, it's very high right now.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Chairman, may I?
Yes, sir.
You say this is the third one. How, how often do we do this?
So initially, so the first one, we, uh, updated in two thousand and five, and at that time, it was good for five years. And then since then, they've extended it, so it's good for seven years.
Yeah, you can choose, and then they chose seven, which was smart, smart. Um, so two thousand and eleven was the last one that you had approved.
Yeah, 'cause in two, two thousand and five, it seemed a lot more cumbersome than this one did.
Um, well, we, so we had, uh, an expired plan at that time, so it was almost like starting from scratch.
Okay.
And now the last two have been more updating, uh, a more modern, up-to-date plan, so...
And in two thousand and eight, D C S came out with some guidelines, um, that were helpful for communities to understand what was expected in the plan as well. So I'm sure that was probably equally as helpful.
Okay. Well, we're all set right now?
Need a vote or anything, John? Vote to accept...
Uh, we were looking for a letter of support from the board. So one of the requirements is to have a letter from, uh, the, from you all, as well as the planning board, which we have received, Recreation Commission, which we've also, we've also received, and the Regional Planning Agency, so M A P C, which we have received that one as well. So they've all reviewed the plan.
Sure we can, I'm sure we can accommodate that.
Please. We need all five signatures, or can Paul sign for us? It doesn't matter, we can do both, I just...
I'm not, I, I'm sorry, I don't know that...
I don't think it matters.
Okay.
I think actually the letter that we had last time was so, signed by John Petron.
Okay, that's fine.
So we'll vote to allow the town administrator.
Okay.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can we just get that vote?
What's that?
Can we get that vote?
Oh, yeah.
I make a motion that we, uh, approve.
Second.
One made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just, uh, making another motion just to allow Paul, all included, to allow Paul to, uh, sign it, please.
Show move.
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number one thirty-one. Um, tonight, uh, we have another step toward the town being accepted into the Green Communities Program. As you recall, the board has supported us in this initiative since February. Uh, we took another major step on this in May, when town meeting accepted the stretch energy building code. Uh, what we're asking the board to do tonight is to, to adopt the attached fuel-efficient vehicle policy and anti-idling policy. Uh, we'll also be sending those over to the school committee, uh, to have them adopt the same. Um, as you may recall from our previous discussions, uh, these policies primarily affect our municipal fleet, uh, both public safety vehicles and also D P W equipment and heavy trucks are exempt from these policies, so it doesn't, uh, we're not gonna have to buy electric police cars or fire, uh, fire trucks or anything like that. So there's an exemption in there. Will primarily affect, uh, municipal vehicles that, uh, you know, the boards, uh, custodians, the town hall vehicles, the basic, uh, inspector-type vehicles. Um, you know, we're requesting the board, uh, vote to adopt these policies, so we can continue on our path to, to become a green community. So I know the, the policies were provided in the backup, uh, they've been reviewed by Central Maintenance, Public Works, and there's no objections to them.
So reading this all real quick, I think this is a great idea for the town. Do you want this in two votes, where there's two different items?
There are two, yeah, there are two separate policies.
Separate policies, so two, two different votes?
Please.
Okay. So let's go with the, um, the first one, uh, town, town of Burlington, anti-idling policy. Gentlemen, we have any comments on this, or would you like to speak on this one?
I just had a quick question, Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely.
The, the vehicles that were approved at town meeting, like the border health vehicle, they'll fall under this?
Yeah, w- we had looked into this, we, we'd all, already been purchasing vehicles that meet these guidelines, just as a matter of regular business. I think it's, it's only a matter of time before they're all fuel-efficient, I would say. Uh, so it's, it shouldn't impact anything that, uh, is ongoing, uh, they would, they would be compliant, as is. Thank you.
Any other questions on this one?
No, just a, a comment that, um, reading through it, my, my first response, uh, was, where, where are the fire trucks? Where are the, and then it was a while into it before they mentioned fire trucks and fire engines, uh, were exempt from the, uh, the guidelines.
Yeah, that's, that's the big thing that jumps out at everybody when we start talking about that, is, uh, you know, electric police cars and electric fire trucks sort of, uh, uh, make people a little bit nervous, so...
Okay, if there's no questions, I, oh, you do, I'm sorry.
Regarding the anti-idling policy, are we gonna be having employees sign off, uh, sign off that they've acknowledged the policy?
Uh, we'll be monitoring it, and, uh, I think it's something we should discuss as to how it gets distributed to those folks that, that get assigned vehicles, so...
And ironically, there are people in town who will come up to them if there's a vehicle idling, and let them know that in fact, they shouldn't be, so... I think, like, we got a lot of people, but we can't be keeping track of this.
I'll tell you, uh, Selectman Tigas, at that time, was the person that explained to me why the vehicles idle, so, uh, the police vehicles anyway.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, so that was a eye-opener for me back then, in two thousand and five. He was the first person that ever, I think I got, uh, made a little quick joke about his, "Cruiser idling," and he explained to me, uh, you know, the public safety purpose as to why, why it's left running, uh, so...
I'd like to hear that sometime, uh, Jim.
We'll chat offline.
Any questions, Michael, on the second one?
No. Okay, can I get a motion on, uh, the, the anti-idling policy? You gotta do them with separate votes, so...
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion, we, uh, adopt the town of Burlington anti-idling policy.
A motion by Jim, seconded by?
Second.
Mike, sorry.
That's okay.
All right, what, motion, seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those against, abstained? Five zero zero in favor of that one?
In your, um, in your backup, there's some motions, and, uh, the town administrator should be allowed to sign these two policies.
Okay. You wanna vote too?
Please.
I'm just kidding. All right. Uh, let's move right along to the, uh, uh, fuel-efficient vehicle policy. Do we have questions on that one?
Uh, just that, something that Paul just said, we're already well down the road of purchasing efficient, uh, vehicles, aren't we?
Yes. Um, in the town administrator's report, I'll, I'll probably bring it up later, but we're, we're investigating the possibility of, uh, electric vehicle fueling station for behind the town hall, so I can update you on that. Sort of plays into this whole future of where the, where vehicles are going, so, yep.
Mr. Chairman? Paul, do we have any idea how close we are becoming designated as a green community?
Um, we actually, um, were recently awarded, uh, a nine-thousand-dollar grant to assist, uh, Public Works in putting together, we've, we, once we have these policies adopted, I believe the last, um, part, which is, uh, there's a lot of work involved in it, is setting our energy baseline, which is basically putting together all the information as to how much energy we're using now, so that we can use it as a baseline to measure the savings, uh, as we move forward in the program. So that's pretty much, uh, the last step. And like I say, we were fortunate enough, uh, because of our other actions, that we did receive, uh, nine-thousand-dollar grant to assist Public Works in, in putting together all that information, uh, so that we can, uh, be the final step, I think, to get into the program.
And we have a lot of that historical data.
We do. We had already be, had begun using, uh, software provided by the state in order to sort of track our utility usage. So we're, we're well on our way on it, uh, thanks to, uh, Public Works.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, anybody else on this? No, we're good. Okay, so can I get a motion on this one, uh, fuel-efficient?
Mr. Chairman, uh, I'll make a motion to approve the town of Burlington fuel-efficient vehicle policy as submitted or as amended, and to allow the town administrator to sign the policy on behalf of the board of selectmen.
Fantastic. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. So a motion made by Jim, seconded by Nick. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All against, abstained? Five zero zero in favor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Moving right along.
Mr. Chairman, uh, next up?
He's right, uh, he's right there.
Good. We have, uh...
Taylor.
...entertainment license before you for Del Frisco's.
Hi, gentlemen, how are you?
Hey, how are you? Let me, um, let me start quickly on this one. This is Taylor. Gentlemen, I had a, a meeting with him, uh, last Monday, um, on Del Frisco's itself, uh, with Andy Ungerson. Uh, we went over quite a bit, um, on Del Frisco's about having a three-piece band, um, combo type of thing up on the second floor. Um, we sat down, it was great to talk to him, he had a lot of insight, a lot of stuff. Andy was very good. The first floor wouldn't work because of electrical cords. Second floor works out better for us. Um, it's a better location, uh, no more than three people. Um, they're gonna have, uh, Andy talked about, there's a back stairwell. I know you don't have, you might have a diagram there someplace with you, but there's a back stairwell, um, that they can use for, um, uh, an exit on both ends of it. There's one in the front they can use. Uh, we went over quite a bit. Um, where was I? Uh, Andy was a little concerned there might be a noise problem. I don't particularly see that being so far away from the street, and it's Middlesex Turnpike, that's not residential. I didn't quite see that. Um, so Andy was in favor, I was in favor, but if there's any other questions that you gentlemen would like to talk to Taylor about, he, I had him come in tonight so we could go over this and get this thing going. And, um, before I, before I give up, one second. Um, I think this is gonna be, uh, very big for us. I think this is gonna be, I know the Cafesco draws this inside, and they're doing it outside, and we've got the third half to think about, and we have the district to think about, so that was a big process for all of us to think about this, as far as putting a three-piece band outside. Does this mean they're all gonna come to us? We don't know. I, I don't know, but I think for the bottom line, for myself personally, is I wanna see these places succeed. And if it means bringing a small three-piece band on a weekend, on one night of the week, or, or, what would we say, Thursday?
Yeah, I was looking for Thursday, Friday, or Saturday.
Right.
Maybe one day, maybe two, depending on what kind of business we...
Yeah, so that's what we're looking at. We'll come up with a, whether it's a, a, a one-day-a-week and a weekend thing, or, uh, something like that, we can discuss that tonight. Uh, I couldn't make any decisions naturally at that point, so, um, on that note, just remember that whatever we do tonight is gonna set up presidents for the rest of the town, I believe. Uh, we look at every individual, um, restaurant on its own, not, uh, we are setting a president, but we kind of are setting up one tonight. There's, there's a bunch of restaurants in town, so it's something we all have to think about. Now, I'm not... Go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I apologize to the chairman and to Taylor for not being at the subcommittee meeting, uh, this past week. Um, so this is outside, this is so obviously it's seasonal, correct?
Correct. It would be on the upstairs outside patio.
Okay. Um, so you're not increasing or decreasing seating in the winter versus in the summer, or vice versa?
So for the upstairs patio, for the bands or three-piece to be able to fit, uh, we would be removing a couple of the tables, uh, space-wise, just because we don't want overcrowding. Um, obviously, it is a technically floating patio, um, so...
But there's nobody out there in the winter anyways?
No, 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 not in the winter time, no. Uh, but yeah, it would be seasonal, it's just something we're, uh, we're thinking about with a lot of, uh, new restaurants coming in the area, maybe something that would set us apart, um, so we'd be able to continue to grow, uh, day in and day out.
Okay, and the ballpark hours?
Uh, so, mm, we said, it was six to ten, six to eleven-ish, uh, nothing super crazy, So, we said, it was six to ten, six to eleven-ish, nothing super crazy, and, you know, same thing that Kings kinda does right now with karaoke on Thursday nights, that's kinda the same idea, we were thinking, you know, maybe Thursday, jazz music, upstairs patio, something small, just to get things rolling.
Okay, that's all, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Bob asked a question about hours, that was one of my questions, me, I don't think you have to worry about the band being a problem as far as sound, you have Route 128 on one side, Route 3 on the other, and Middlesex Turnpike on the third, so your customers may have a little hard time hearing the band, they may be hearing the traffic, my question is, well, this, I know you have, you're limiting the band to certain nights, certain times, they're not gonna be available for private parties like on the weekend and during the day and stuff like that, are they?
Uh, no, right now our plan is not to have bands available for any private events that we hold, typically they would just be in-house for us, weather permitted, and to move forward from there.
All right, that's all.
That's it?
Yep.
Mike?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, why don't we try and get, get some specifics then this evening, so we don't have to have Taylor come back again, if anybody has any recommendation, I mean, I'm fine with what I'm hearing so far, but is it gonna be ten, is it gonna be eleven, is it gonna be two nights, is it gonna be three nights?
So as I told Joe when I sat down with him, I don't really wanna reach too far, as we are the first restaurant that's asking for outdoor band, so the guidelines are completely open for you guys, like I said, I was thinking something around six to eleven o'clock, right now we close our upstairs patio quite early, and we really want to use that as a later date to kinda build sales that way, being the only rooftop deck or second floor patio in Burlington to start with, so I'm completely open to, to whatever kind of parameters you guys set for us to, to start, and then, you know, as he has alluded to last Monday, we can always revisit it if we decide, hey, can we throw Wednesdays into it, or do you mind if we move it to five o'clock, you know, things like that.
So my thought, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Nick, go right ahead with your questions.
Sorry, my only question is, how will we handle noise complaints? If there were any?
I'm sorry, what?
Noise complaints.
We'd have to call the police station, number one, they get the station, we'll find out what happened, what time of the night it was, and we'll go from there, until, if we need to take a Thursday night away from them, then we have the right to do that.
Okay.
So it all depends on them, I was thinking of the hours from like six to eleven, this was, this was all in the discussion, and then give them the three nights a week, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, it's three nights a week, there's no residential over there, I think it makes a big difference with the residential side of it, to me, Jimmy, you're right, you got 128, you got Middlesex Turnpike, you really don't have a lot of noise going on over there, it may happen, I don't know, but I'd like to give them the opportunity.
If I may, I'm actually, I agree a hundred percent with you, I'm okay with six to eleven, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, but would we want to have them come back in the fall, just, whenever the season ends, and just to see how it went, we're, they're the first ones.
Sure, we can do that.
Yeah, I mean, if you, if you'd like me to, to keep an eye on sales and everything that we've pulled in from the patio, the computer divides everything by revenue centers, so I can see exactly how much it's either gone up or down since we started, I can try and put something together for you that way, it'll help you in the future.
And then if we have noise complaints or issues, obviously they'll be addressed at the moment.
Yeah.
But then we can review those when you return.
I think that's it, those entertainment licenses, annual.
Yeah.
Anyhow, so we'd have an opportunity to review them when they come back in the spring, or whenever they come.
December, you'll have to come back for another license.
One of the, one of the things that we, we had talked about that particular day at the meeting was the fact that, my personal thing is, with today's technology and the way music is today, you can get a keyboard that does absolutely everything, you can get drums, you can get, you can get xylophones, you can get whatever you need on these things, so I just said limited to three people, because I didn't wanna see a whole band up there with the, with, you could, they, there's a lot they can do, so, my biggest thing was six to eleven, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, three pieces only.
I have one more quick question.
Yep, go right ahead.
It will, no DJs, it'll be a strict band, correct?
Yeah, our, like I said, our idea is something along the jazz or acoustic level, you know, just one guy with a stool and a microphone playing cover bands, or cover songs of, of different bands, just to kinda lighten the mood a little bit.
Question to both Taylor and Jimmy, based on where you're at, are any of the businesses likely to complain about the noise, because there's not much else over there, the bookstore's too far away?
I was gonna say Barnes &amp; Noble, it is, there's quite a good tree line that blocks us as far as noise-wise, and then, I don't know what their hours of operation are, but I feel like six to eleven would be late enough that the crowd wouldn't be too big over there, and the patio has a wall that bordered it, will, that will border it from, like the Sleep Number and that whole strip of buildings over there, so realistically, the turnpike would probably be the only people that would be hearing this.
Yeah, Barnes &amp; Noble is nine AM to eleven PM every day, I, like I said, I don't think that's an issue in that location, there are no residences, as Joe pointed out, and unless there's a business within that complex itself, the ninety Middlesex Turnpike area, I don't see any issue of, of people getting worried, upset about it, but only time will tell.
Like I said earlier, this is just a big thing for us, because it does set presidents for the rest of the town, and there's a lot of restaurants, I mean, you just take that third Ave, you get Nino's and you get Tony C's, the two of them have a band together where, I think they have a battle of bands over there, you know, they're right next to each other.
Now you're giving them ideas, Joe.
I am, I've already, I've already called them on them all, don't worry about it, but anyway, so, if everybody's all set with the hours of six, six to eleven, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and they have to come back in front of us, and if there is a noise complaint, we'll take care of it, so I'm looking for a motion, go ahead.
I just wanted, with regards to them coming back, if they have to renew in December, I'm okay with waiting till December, so.
Okay, all right, okay.
Three members? Three?
Yeah, three, yes, I'm sorry, Betty, yep, so does, somebody, I.
Sure, I'll make the motion.
Make a motion.
Make a motion to allow Del Frisco's to have outdoor entertainment on the second floor patio, seasonally, weather permitting, up, up to three people between the hours of six and eleven PM, Thursday, Fridays, Friday, Saturdays.
I'll second that.
One second, so a motion by, Nick, second by Jimmy, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against, abstain? Okay, five zero zero in favor, good luck.
All right, thank you very much.
Thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you for coming in, and thank you for being so patient with us and understanding what we're looking for, too.
He's invited us the first night.
What's that?
He's invited us the first night.
Oh yeah, you're supposed to invite us all the first night, too.
Thank you very much.
You didn't even hear me, you didn't even hear me, you're supposed to invite us all the first night. Come on up, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Sagarino, where are we?
Chairman, did anybody check with the beer that lived back there to see if that was gonna disturb him?
That's a good, why didn't I bring that up? I should, I should've asked you for your comments on this, my fault, all right, Paul.
Mr. Chairman, next up, we have a request for use of the public roadway for the procession of deities, which has been an event here in town over the past several years, so.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Sir, could we just please have your official name for the record, for Betty?
Yeah, my name is Sivarama Putsal, I'm a resident of Two Prouty Road, I'm right here in the town, so, this is for, this is a procession from the Hindu temple that we have in town, this is a nonprofit, tax-exempt organization, we set it up in two thousand eleven, and every year it's up at the Hindu rituals, we take the temple gods out on a procession in the street, we go from the Wilmington Road, the Route Plaza, Plaza sixty-two, to the Lakashia Bakery and turn around and get back, so it's about point eight miles each way, about covering about one point six miles, takes about forty, forty-five minutes, and last few years, this is the fifth year we are doing this, and last four years you have been granting us the permit, and then police has been very helpful in getting this going, so we would like to request the same this year, this is on July sixth, and I did mail, along with the request letter, I did include the police chief, Mr. Michael Kent, and he did respond back saying that Mr. McDade will be in touch on this, I'll touch base with him, and provided we get the support from the police, we'll try to, we would like to go on the road.
Fantastic, thank you, I'm gonna let the board member speak first, because I've been here the four years, and it's, never had a problem with it, so.
I've heard nothing but great things, I haven't seen it myself, but they've.
All right, you're most welcome to join us on.
And you've always had good weather, haven't you?
Usually it's even considered a good omen if it rains for a few minutes before and then gets soft weather, and that's, that's what has been happening.
Because I plan my cookouts around your event, because you have good.
Been good.
Jim?
Well, in the event that Mr. Hogan has to cancel his cookout, do you have a plan for a rain date if it rains on July sixth?
No, we don't have a plan for a rain day, if it doesn't happen, it doesn't happen.
Okay.
And in case if police support is not available and we are not able to get out on the road, we'll just be in the parking lot for a few, about ten, fifteen minutes and get back.
Mike?
Uh, no, Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm fine with this.
Thank you. Yeah, no questions, I think this is great. Fantastic, Paul?
Police department's on board with helping out again, so, I saw those emails confirmed, so, we should be all set from a public safety standpoint.
All right, fantastic, it's been a great event, so it's been good, do we have a motion? Motion, motion to approve the procession on, the date June, July?
July sixth.
July sixth, Mr. Chairman, thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
By Nick, so a motion by Mike, second by Nick, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against, abstain? Five zero zero in favor, Betty, thank you, thank you very much, good luck.
Good night, we'll see you again.
Nice, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, then we're moving right along, huh? Paul?
Mr. Chairman, item one thirty-four, we're gonna post on, needs a little bit more work.
Okay, excellent.
Number one thirty-five is ambulance rates, we have the chief and assistant chief here, discuss town's ambulance billing rates with you.
Okay, gentlemen? Betty, do they need to sign in, or do we know who they are?
So I'm just gonna introduce it, so tonight we have the chief and assistant chief here to, to discuss adjusting our rate factor for ambulance services, as you can see in the backup materials, our current ambulance rate was set in two thousand thirteen at a factor of Medicare rate plus a hundred and fifty percent, and really the three factors driving this request are, the first two are that we haven't adjusted the rates in six years, and the second is that we're providing a new service with ALS service being provided, so we wanna make sure that we're charging the most recent and applicable rates, the third, and finally, the most, really the most timely, is that there's some pending, there could be some new legislation that has been proposed, that could limit our ability to charge the most recent and applicable rates, and the chiefs can get into that, if there's some questions on that after. Two other points I'd like to point out from the backup, first is, there's some data on our ambulance runs in that backup, and you can see the, the breakdown of the runs and who this, who this change really would affect, you know, more than half of our runs are covered by Medicare, and this wouldn't affect those rates, another ten percent or so of those are, are covered by facilities that have contracted rates, which wouldn't affect those either, and really that's less than a third remaining that are covered by private insurance, which is, which is really who would be affected by this rates. The second thing I wanna point out, and really probably the first question that would be asked by anybody, it's important to point out that there is an abatement process that exists today for anybody that has a bill, that has something on it that's not covered by your insurance company, and you have a financial hardship or whatever, there's a process that already exists that someone could call and go through that process to have that bill abated, so, the chiefs, chiefs are here to discuss a little more and answer any questions you have, I'm just here to introduce.
Gentlemen?
I think we're done, I think we did a great job.
Okay, all those in favor?
We haven't changed the rates in six years, so we're basically running on two thousand thirteen rates, before that it was two thousand nine, so we look at these things on a regular basis, and we're on the lower end, we compare ourselves to these fifteen communities we saw in the backup, we're the second lowest, we feel we should, need to be brought up to the standard of what's in our area, so, I mean, even though, like, I mean, everybody looks at these on a regular basis, I mean, I know Bedford is, I talked to the chief in Bedford today, they're above us and they're looking to raise their rates next week.
So one thing, we, we talk about the new legislation that would limit us.
Sure, so ambulance rates, ambulance billing rates are something that's looked at on both the federal side and the state, and the state side, there's discussion about capping billing ambulance rates, so we feel it's in the town's best interest to try to get ahead of this, any type of pending legislation where the legislation could cap ambulance billing rates, once an ambulance billing rate is capped, in the Commonwealth, for example, we would then have to go before a board, and we would have to explain why the increases are necessary, so, we've, we've had discussions, we've been discussing this for actually a couple of years with Mr. Patron, and before any of this legislation is enacted, we wanna set our ambulance billing rates.
And one piece I neglected, and left that paragraph out when I was talking, was what we, what we're actually proposing, was to go from that current rate of Medicare plus one fifty percent to go to a rate factor of Medicare plus three hundred percent.
Okay.
You know, typically too, Joe, I'm sorry to interrupt, but, you know, as our call volume increases, our expenses also increase, you know, hence why we are looking to.
So I can cross that off. I'm gonna save my comments for last, I'm gonna start with Jimmy tonight, any comments?
Just quick, looking at the other fifteen communities, it looks like we're one of the lowest, and we're, that's at the basic BLS level, and almost all the, majority of the other towns are already at this plus three hundred, and then we'll be anticipating going to ALS, so I, again, we just seem to be on the very low end at, at the moment, and I like the idea of the abatement program as well, so, it's pretty much just an observation, not even a question.
Paul?
No, I, I think the timing on this is, is right on target at the moment, that we need to get this done, and get it done smart.
Thank you, Nick? No questions, thank you. Mike?
No, I'm gonna refrain, you're refraining.
Okay, so, you're right, you're right on this, there's a lot of things that are positive about this, but none of us like going up on prices for anything for town residents or whatever it may be, it's just the way we, we've always been this way as a board, I've sat here for six years, and I've seen this twice, and both times we've turned it down, so, this is, Mike, you could, you couldn't be any more right about the cost of everything else going up, everything else goes up, our runs are bigger than now than they've ever been, with the size of the town it is, how many people are here during the course of a day, between the accidents and people in buildings and wherever it may be, so, none of us like going up on rates at all, but this is something that I think as a town we need to do, Jimmy hit right on, spot on with the abatement aspect of this, if there is a problem, if resident has a problem, they can always call, and we can take it, take a look at it and go through the process, so, those are just my thoughts on this, thank you guys for doing the work on this, and looking for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the increase of the ambulance rates from the plus one fifty to plus three hundred.
Second.
So motion by Bob, second by Jim, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those against, abstain?
Abstain.
Four zero one, Betty, gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay. My favor. Paul?
Mr. Chairman, tonight, we have before you, with item one thirty-six is reappointments to town administrator and selectmen committees, I think how we've sort of done this in the past, is we've sort of read a committee, and if a, a board member wishes to discuss something, they would hold it, sort of like we do with budgets at town meeting, and come back to it at the end, but if there's no objection, we can sort of run through the committees there, the ISAC committee, which is highlighted in gray on your sheet, is a, is a relatively, it's reinvigorated, so they're actually, we're treating them as if they're new appointments, so we'd like to do that one separately, but for the pre-existing board members, if we could just sort of go down the list and take a, a vote to appoint all those for which there are no objections, and then we can sort of come back to any of the ones that the board members have, you know, individual questions on, so.
But we're not calling it ISAC, we're calling it Cyber Security Committee?
I think it's the ISAC committee reinvigorated for the purpose of fulfilling the cyber security request that was made at town meeting, so.
Paul, I think that's a great idea, if you just go down the list, and if somebody wants to hold it up, just say hold, and we'll talk about it when he's all done, if everybody's okay with it, would you like us to vote us all at once, once that's settled, or, right?
We'll do the selectmen ones first, and then we'll come down and do the town administrator's ones, and we'll make the appointment motion, so we'll do it in a couple different segments.
Okay, great.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I plan on abstaining from Board of Appeals, but I know Mr. Espojo's now with the planning board, so we would not.
Do that one separately.
All right, but I will abstain from Board of Appeals.
Okay.
Just for the record.
Paul?
Okay, audit committee, and just, side note, as someone asked me if they were gonna be reappointed this today, and I said, there's no one else that wants to be appointed to it, so. Appointed to it, but, audit committee, two members of Board of Appeals, we'll take Mr. Espojo off of there, and those are the two we have now for Board of Selectmen, I make a motion to reappoint the existing members of those two committees, and ask that the board waive the fifteen-day waiting period, is that necessary, Betty, on these?
Yes, yes, it is, but I think Jim wants to abstain on the Board of Appeals.
Correct.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, the next up, which is the ISAC committee, which is sort of a, it was a pre-existing committee, but it was sort of, the purpose of it was no longer needed, so it's sort of a stop meeting, so this is a reinvigoration of that committee, and we have seven, seven members to appoint, Jerry Bisho, Barbie Chung, David Miller, Steve Moran, Phil Pascali, Larry Warfield, and Kent Moffett, I know that Betty had provided you with all that individual information, they're all very impressive, impressive skills in this particular subject area, and we're asking them to do a very specific topic, and so I think it's a, it's a great group of appointees, so, be happy to hear any questions or comments on any of those.
I don't object to any of the names, but I would like to talk about the committee itself.
Sure.
At, at some point later tonight or at a next meeting, just talking about parameters and what we're looking for, and.
Sure. Do you wanna do that now, or?
Well, if I may, maybe, maybe at some point have someone from the committee come in and just give us an overview?
Sure, sure.
You'd like to wait till then, Bob, when the, someone comes in, we'll talk about everything?
I don't have a problem approving this tonight.
Right, no, no, we understand that, yeah, absolutely.
We'll have them come in and update, update the board as to how they would like to approach the warrant article, and I'll, you know, check to see what type of resources they may need from us, I know.
Yeah, and incorporate stuff from the audit that we looked at over the weekend, but talked about tonight, I think, knowing that this stuff is here, to let them know that we're interested in making sure that others have looked at it, and we'd like to have them take a look at it also.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So, do we need a vote on the subject?
Yes, so I'd like to appoint those seven members to the ISAC committee, and ask the board to waive its standard fifteen-day waiting period.
Do I have a motion, second? Motion by, pull up second by Jimmy, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those against, abstain? Five zero zero in favor, Betty?
Thank you, and now on to the town administrator appointments, I'll read off the committee, if there's any objections, just we'll. If there's any objections, just we'll hold it and we'll have a discussion at the end. Burlington Public Transit, Board of Registars, Cemetery Oversight Committee, Conservation Commission, Disabilities Access Commission, DPW Recreation Building Committee, Historical Commission, Housing Partnership. That one has an open seat, just so everybody is aware of that. Betty's gonna get that advertised shortly. Rink Oversight Committee and Youth and Family Services Advisory Committee.
So, seeing there was no one holding this up, or was there?
Just a quick question on the Youth and Family Services. I should abstain from this, yes?
I would. Yeah, just, yes, sir.
Okay, so we'll do, uh...
I'm sorry, you're abstaining from Cemetery Oversight? No, Youth and Family Services. Oh, Youth and Family Services, I'm sorry. My apologies.
So, I'll just take a vote on everything, everything but Youth and Family Service right now. So, I have a motion on that?
Second.
I'll move, Michael, Bob. All those in favor?
Aye.
And we'll have a motion on Youth and Family Service. Michael?
Make the motion.
And Jim?
Second.
Thank you, Jim. And all those in favor of that?
Aye.
Abstain?
Abstain.
We have one abstention on that, Betty? So, four one zero, four zero one. All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Before we get into minutes, I know there's a gentleman in the audience and we don't have citizens' time on here anymore, but Mike, would you like to come up for a second please? Then we'll do the minutes and we'll be on our way, I guess. So, last Thursday night, I sat at a meeting with Mike and the Planning Board on a new bagel shop that's coming into, coming into town. Mike asked me a bunch of questions that night. I couldn't, I can't answer them all, so I had Mike come in. He's a neighbor on Pontos and.
Kenny.
Kenny Ave. Mike, I'm gonna leave it up to you to find out exactly what we're looking for and then we'll go from there with the, with what we need to do.
Okay. So, I'm here tonight as a resident and lifelong resident in Burlington, living on Kenny Avenue. Basically, what came about is there's a small bagel shop wanting to come in next to Town Grocery. And currently, right now, Kenny Avenue and Pontos Avenue are used for loading, unloading large vehicles, as well as people running in and out of the stores. Now, the town basically didn't have an issue with a small bagel shop coming in until they heard many residents that attended the meeting that there is a big problem. But the bigger problem more lies with the lack of enforcement that the town of Burlington has with existing laws or, like, no parking, dumpster violations, things along that line. So, the discussion came about, is it time for the town of Burlington to have an enforcement officer in town or to revisit existing fines that are on the books or maybe even create new fines that are on the books? Currently, like I said, on Kenny Avenue, there's no parking that Selectmen Wild, this how far back it went, initiated it with Chief of Police Ed McCafferty supporting it on Kenny Avenue for the no parking. The police do not enforce it realistically. They, they don't have the time. By the time they come, if you do call them, the vehicles are moved. The dumpsters, they get placed wherever, and this just isn't the person at Town Grocery. It's everywhere. It's Mass Glass, it's down A Street. Pick, pick a place in Burlington, they're not enclosed there. You got the signed bylaws that businesses don't, you know, go by once they get the permit. So, basically, I'm here tonight to see if there's anything the Selectmen can do to take a look at the existing, existing fines that we have in the books, existing policies we have in the books. Maybe the town enters into an agreement that it's just no parking, but the vehicle will be towed. You enter into an agreement with Win Street Towing. You just drive around, if the cars parked there, they tow it and off it goes. They do the same at the mall or any other businesses. But any help that the Selectmen can give the residents will be greatly appreciated.
Okay, so on, on that note, when I was at the meeting, Mike, the owner, the owner of the new bagel shop and the actual, I don't know if it's the owner of the building or his uncle or however it works over there. We did discuss the trucks for deliveries for the package store and deliveries for one-stop and whatever else. The Flex Appeal isn't there anymore. Mike's shop is gonna be a very small bagel, small truck from what he told us. So, Mike's gonna work on that aspect of it. He's also gonna work on the dumpster company, 'cause from what I gathered that night, 5:30, 6 o'clock in the morning, and I know they can't start till 7, right? 7 o'clock is their start time for the dumpster companies. So, that's something that he's gonna work on. Our aspect right now, for me, what I had told Mike was the fact that we were, we were gonna work on what can be done as far as enforcement goes. So, I'm gonna ask you, Paul, can we look at what the cost is when someone's parked there? How much is a ticket? Is it $1.50, is it two? I don't know what they are. Is it something that we need to look at throughout town and maybe go up in price or something like that? Yeah, the residents are there, yeah, the store's there too. This is part of being in the center of Burlington. So, we have to try to work together on this. You live on that street, so you see a lot of it. And I didn't realize that till tonight. He just told me he lived down that way. I thought you lived someplace else. 'Cause then he'd go to your house or the other place. Someone would've got very upset with me.
So, I don't know who you've been throwing rocks at, but it wasn't my house.
I don't throw rocks. I have no more arm anymore. But anyway, so that's what we're here for tonight. Gentlemen, if we'd like to have a discussion about this and go on.
If I could, Mr. Chairman, just to start, good evening, Michael. I'm gonna state that I use that space for my reelection bid. I know the Telopolis is, but I'm not gonna abstain because I'm not gonna shirk whatever responsibility is mine as a Selectman to make sure that this gets addressed. So, I wanted out there that I did use it. Nothing was asked for of me for that. Nothing was offered. So, I just wanna put that out there.
Great, okay. Jimmy?
Sure. Regarding the dumpsters, there is the bylaw 7:00 a.m. If a dumpster, if a truck comes to pick up the dumpster before that, call the.
So, the other morning, a dumpster was picked up at 2:30.
Call the police station.
2:30 in the morning?
Yeah.
Call every time because.
I do not, I'm not gonna say it was Mike's dumpster, right? I can just say that a neighbor of mine mentioned that it was at 2:30. But here's the thing, Selectmen takes, the police know the bylaw and these trucks are going in all throughout town and they're not being stopped.
Well, they can't be stopped, but they, if someone calls, if there's a noise complaint or a bylaw violation.
Yes. But when you're pulling down Terry Avenue, you're not going to Dunkin' Donuts.
Right.
Right? And, and I don't wanna fingerpoint, I don't wanna, I don't wanna go there. I just wanna move forward and, and solve an issue townwide. It's just not Kenny Avenue. These trucks don't belong in these areas at that time of the morning.
No, I agree.
Mike is actually gonna go on board to see if this trucking company can come later. He's very cooperative. So, yes, 6 o'clock, 5 o'clock in the morning, 7 o'clock, even at 7 o'clock, this particular dumpster that we're talking about is literally 15 feet from someone's bedroom window. It doesn't even belong there.
But that was, you're right, it was, you're 100% right, it doesn't belong there. But if you remember during the meeting, the, Mike's gonna meet with the Planning Board to have that all moved out of there. So, that's right, okay, so.
What I'm saying though, is the town has no support. The Planning Board came down and did a site visit. They said everything was fine. The fire department came down, did a site visit. They said everything was fine. On the original permit, that's a fire lane that has three dumpsters in it. What I'm, what I'm saying is, once something is permitted in town, we don't really have a lot of enforcement behind it. And, and that's why we almost need somebody that does this for the town that can get away from the boards. That, that's what I'm saying. No, no one's pointing fingers here. But we're a big enough town now that once a permit is given or something is given, there's no.
Follow-up?
Well, I mean, not, not fault, there's no bite, you know, like, like, we have called when Mr. Clancy was the building inspector. He would come down, Mass Glass, he'd cite him or whatever, but a week, two weeks later, they're, they're back at it. And you can't really expect the police department to give a ticket if it's $5 or $10 every time someone parks there. But if we, if we had a department or more bite behind it, you know, I guess that's what I'm asking you guys to look into.
Right, go ahead.
I guess, that'd be, that's long range, I can understand that. But in the meantime, like I said, you do have that option to call. As far as the parking on Kenny and Pontos, a thought would be to have engineering meet up with Sergeant McDonough, 'cause he's in charge of traffic, and take a look at those two areas specifically. Is it signed properly? Is, are the curbs proper? In other words, just go assess those two areas if need be, put up new signage and let the business owners that, from now on, the police are gonna be enforcing this, even change the signage, you know, at least to try to attack that problem now.
The signage on Kenny Avenue has been relatively new in, in being replaced. You know, another, another issue that the residents have is snow removal. Mass Glass, they take all this snow and they push it onto Kenny Avenue in the wintertime. I have stopped sending emails and calling the town to try to get it off Kenny Avenue so we can get in there safely. Again, this would be something that the town could enforce and we're not involving the police per se on, on these matters. You know, I, I believe the police has, they, they have too much on the plate. You know, I almost think they're under staffed and to be calling every time somebody parks, whether it's Kenny Avenue. I don't think Pontos Ave has parking, no parking.
Not on, not up close. The residents do further down, but we get some.
You know, you also have the mall and, and everywhere else.
Just a quick, quick follow-up. That would also prevent people from parking there and taking the bus too. So, maybe we could look at a short-term and a long-term goal for that area.
Yeah, and we certainly, first step would be to have the Traffic Safety Committee take a look at it.
Okay.
And that would be, you know, Jerry and Tony and, and that group, so.
That committee, any chance I could be involved with it at the initial onset or is it?
I'm not sure how they've typically gone about their work, if, if they've, if they've utilized that, but I could certainly check into that for you.
You know, and just real quick, the reason why these came is, is with the bagel shop, our concern so much isn't with the people going in and sitting down and eating, it's the phone. People are gonna call in, they're gonna order their bagels or whatever. They're not gonna fight the traffic getting back out of King Street. And what happens is they get on Pontos, they get on Kenny, down Marv for, for the side road. But years ago, when Mass Glass was there, they didn't have satellite windshield replacement. People had to come and leave their car for the day. You had cars parked on both sides. That's where the no parking all originated from.
Okay, so we get, we got it all out there. We're gonna, Paul's gonna look into it and then we'll be in touch and see where we go from there. On, on the other side, yes, I'm sorry. Yeah, I forgot. Sorry, I was, yeah. Never mind, you two. I don't even wanna talk to you two. Go ahead, gentlemen.
I, I, Mike, I know exactly what you're talking about. You're, you're in an area that's pretty heavily congested, pretty tight down there. And I've heard from Andrea as well on numerous occasions. So, you're, you're looking at multiple jurisdictions here, traffic, dumpsters, site cleanliness and so on and so forth. So, you know, I, I, I trust the town administrator will be reaching out to, to those agencies that are responsible for those things. And, and I know we've done it in the past. I know, I know you mentioned Clancy was down there himself personally. Those things are very difficult to enforce as we found out. They end up in the, you know, if they threaten to take them to court, they don't even, they don't really care, they'll pay the fine and just keep doing business as usual. But I, I don't want you to think that we're being dismissive, but it's, some of those are difficult to enforce. But the, you know, picking up the trash at 2:30 in the morning should be pretty easy, Jim. Really does, but anyhow, we, I look forward to working with you with anything we can do. And I, I trust Paul will make the necessary contacts first thing in the morning.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll just briefly, first off, thank you for coming down. I know it's a lot of people take time out of their day to come to a meeting. You know, and I always encourage people that if you, if you want to, for us to hear you, you know, come talk to us. It's one of the best ways to do it. I think the Traffic Safety Commission and, you know, obviously make the calls, have your neighbors make the calls, call the police department for now. At least it'll be logged and we'll have record of it and we, and we know, okay, great. They were there at 3:30, they were there at 4:30, 2:30, we'll, we'll know moving forward. And then long-term, maybe we do need to evaluate, you know, what the fines are and, you know, what the enforcement level is. Because this isn't the first that I've heard from, from residents, not even just down in your area, but just across town.
A street, everywhere.
You know, just, yeah, I mean, we're, you know, we, we go from 25,000 people, you know, at night to, you know, what, 200,000, 108,000 during the day. There's a lot of things happening during the day and we wanna make sure that, you know, our, our residents are, you know, obviously not getting shuffled into, into a corner somewhere. So, we'll, we'll definitely look into it, of course, and, and thank you again.
Thank you very much.
All right. Michael, thank you for your time. I'll be in touch with you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, have a great night, Mike. Thanks for coming down.
You're welcome.
All right. So, moving right along, we're at minutes. Betty, would you like to do them separately or can we do them together?
Whatever you like.
Whatever I like.
I think we should do them separate because you're absent at once, so can't vote on the May 6th.
There you go.
Where was I? Was I busy that night?
You were busy that night, yeah.
All right, do I have a motion for the?
May 6th. I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman, that we approve those minutes.
Second? First and second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstain? Aye. Against? Okay, four one zero, Betty. May 20th, regular session.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman, that we approve the minutes of May 20th.
Second.
First and second, Mike, Bob and Jim. All those in favor?
Aye.
Against, abstain? Five zero zero, Betty. Subcommittee reports. Let's start with Michael tonight.
Oh, and why did you?
'Cause I saw your list.
See my list, it's a long list. You guys wanna, you, you wanna go all the way?
Let's go through, let's go through that one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have a couple of items to report on.
First of all, I, I was, a pleasure to attend the Leahy Health 5K Road Race last Saturday. It was a great crowd. It is well-coordinated down there. There was some good 300 to 400 runners, so it takes, logistics are, are pretty, pretty well-handled by the, the staff at Leahy. And I'm, I'm, it was announced that they exceeded their goal and raised over $500,000 for their cancer treatment facilities that they do in various locations across Massachusetts. Another item, listen, I, you guys are probably hearing it too, probably almost as often as you hear what's gonna go in building 19 and 1/2. Everyone's asking about the new fire station two on Senate Street. It is a beautiful building. We will have an open house for the public, so all those folks who wanted to have a peek, here's your opportunity. Thank you, town administrator. So, we will have an open house on Saturday from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. and the public is certainly more than welcome.
Now, I heard you're gonna be a traffic cop that day, making sure people stay out of the way of the active firefighters.
I will do my best, uh, cause I anticipate a, a fairly good crowd. I think there's a lot of interest, uh, in the community, uh, and like I said, I'm, I'm sure you've all heard from the people that commenting on what a, you know, what a beautiful facility that-
Yeah.
I've heard nothing but fantastic comments.
So again, I, it, not, not to kid around, but i- if people are gonna be going down, if there's any activity, they need to be aware that, that there's things going on that they shouldn't get in the way of.
Yeah, I don't know what, I don't know how much activity there is gonna be.
I've, I've passed it along to the police department, just to let them know that there's potentially an encore casino-like situation going on down there. I think the Fire Station Two has more actual parking spots than the casino site, uh, but, uh, it's still, there's a potential, like Mike says, we don't really know what to expect, but, um, I have put the chief on notice, and he notified his traffic folks that, you know, on that date, they may get called down there just to do a little directing traffic or, you know, crossing people or keeping an eye on things, so, uh, the police department's aware. In terms of, um, keeping everybody out of the firefighters away, that's, that's gonna be Mike's job, uh, so he's gonna make sure that, uh, you know-
We're not, the station's not occupied yet, not just yet, it's, they'll stop moving equipment and the activity. Personnel and things in there, um, um, a little bit of time, they'll be up and at them pretty soon, though. Uh, and let me just give you, uh, a, a couple of the highlights for Fourth of July, believe it or not, it's, it's here in just ten days. Uh, I'll save the, uh, the, the one low light that I have, uh, I think the town administrator's gonna address that, uh, for you in, in his report. Uh, so let me begin with the fireworks. Uh, we, we've always had them on the Fourth of July, the night of the Fourth of July, that's not gonna be the case this year for, for a couple of reasons, but that we are gonna have the fireworks on the Common this Sunday night to kick off the, uh, July fourth week. We've got the band Four on the Roof will be, um, playing on the, on the, at the gazebo on the Common, that starts at six o'clock. Uh, fireworks will be at nine PM again, that's this Sunday night, uh, fireworks from the, um, Burlington High School, okay? Well, we moved that as well, so that's another change we made in the fireworks, so they won't be, they won't be at the Human Resources Building, but they'll be down at the, uh, the high school. Parking can be an issue, uh, so, you know, uh, I believe there's some temporary parking and so on signage that'll be put out around the Common and try not to, uh, ease some of the congestion expected in those neighborhoods. The, uh, Fourth of July Parade will take place on Thursday, uh, morning at, at eleven AM, and that's the route is Cambridge Street, uh, to Main Street, finishing up at the Memorial School. Folks need to be aware that a portion of Cambridge Street will be closed at nine thirty AM from Wilmington Road to Sculpit Lane, so that will be closed from nine thirty in the morning till eleven thirty, twelve o'clock, so we'll have to seek alternate routes, uh, if you're passing through town. And, um, finally, finally, yes, yes, sir.
Fourth of July Parade, um, gentlemen, are we marching?
You're invited to me.
We're invited.
There was talk about us marching, so I would like to find out if we are, uh, the four of us, you won't, will you march with us?
Oh, yeah, he's marched with us.
Would you be directing this whole thing?
I, I could direct the whole thing.
Well, once it starts, once it starts-
Once it starts, oh, yeah, I, I've, I've walked in the past, Ken Gordon will be there, Cindy Friedman's gonna join us this year.
I just heard both we were and we weren't, so I'd like to try to make plans for it.
You're invited, yes, you're, you're invited.
I'm gonna walk by myself.
No.
I'm getting eggs thrown at me at that point.
Golf cart.
Golf cart, yeah, baby. ATV. Uh, are we all in for that?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so, we are walking.
Any, any chance you can get us a prime location this year, though?
Not behind the horses. Not behind the horses, Mike.
You're gonna have to muscle those state troopers off of those horses.
So we'll just do what we want, and then ask for forgiveness later.
And finally, Mr. Chairman, if, uh, I, I'm just pleased, very pleased, um, to announce that, uh, this year's outstanding citizen award has, has, has gone to, uh, I think we all know her, Joyce Delianas, the founder of Help Us, so we think she was a, a wonderful choice. We had a lot of good candidates. I wish I could've chosen them all.
This is a community where that's gonna be an issue for you every year.
It is an issue, it, it is an issue, and it's a difficult decision, we have, I've, you've heard me mention it before, time and again, how much, you know, fortunate we are here in Burlington, to have so many people, uh, that, that pitch in and volunteer in various, various areas, that, yeah, we're certainly blessed to have so many good people here in Burlington, so congratulations to Joyce Delianas.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome.
Appreciate the time.
Mr. Priest.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, so just to echo what Mike said, uh, June thirtieth for fireworks in the band, uh, the band is four on the floor. You had like the-
You had four feet up or something?
Yeah, you were geographically, I think, in a different place, but-
He was, he was thinking of his prom again.
Um, so, you know, the band of the fireworks on, on this Sunday, and then, of course, the parade. Look forward to seeing everybody, it's, uh, hopefully gonna be nice weather. Um, I just wanna say, uh, I had, uh, a great time this weekend, Parks and Recreation did their, uh, Great American Campout, uh, on Simons Park. This is the third or fourth year, I think, of them doing it. Um, my wife and I took the kids up and, and set the tent up on the, in the lower fields of, uh, Simons Park, and, uh, uh, you know, it was, it was great. There were like, uh, I wanna say about fifteen different families, you know, all spread out in their tents, ready to rock and roll, and, uh, you know, Parks and Rec did games with the kids, and, uh, you know, they, they had dinner, and, uh, they played a movie for the kids, and, uh, breakfast in the morning, I mean, just the things that our Parks and Rec Department do, it's, it's just amazing, and, you know, um, I encourage people to take advantage of, of things like this, not just with Parks and Rec, but, you know, you see something and it, it piques your interest, try it, because, um, it's people who engage that have us continue to do these things, and it's, it's, it's a great, a great thing. I, we, we get a blast. Um, I'm light on, on actual subcommittee things, but, uh, we had a Sculpture Park Committee meeting, uh, I think it was last week, um, and the committee is, um, in my opinion, approaching this in a very level-headed and logical, practical way, uh, which I think is great, um, and hopefully, in due time, will have the opportunity to come before the board in full and, uh, and, and talk to everyone about, uh, some thoughts and thinking around that. Um, other than that, uh, looking forward to, uh, the first ISAC meeting. I know that Jerry Rochaute is, uh, ready and ready to go. Um, he's been sending a lot of emails, he's very excited, uh, to get this up off the ground, and I have seen the resumes and the, uh, the applicants, I'm, uh, I'm looking forward to it as well.
Thank you. Um, Jim?
Um, just a couple of things. Mike previously mentioned the, uh, open house at the Fire Department. Uh, there is gonna be a ribbon cutting this Wednesday at eleven AM at Station Two. Um, and the only other thing I have is, uh, not much activity with small cells in town, but Mr. Sacchino and I have been invited to several other towns to guide them or-
Wow.
What do you mean, we?
He's looking for a luncheon date, okay?
That's true.
We have been, they have been inquiring, and, you know, just gonna, I guess, share our knowledge and see if we can help out a neighbor.
Jim's becoming a little bit famous on the small cell circuit, and he's, uh, actually in demand now, so I, I think a couple of communities have already reached out to him, and a couple more have, uh, I told him to get, the other people to get him before he has to start charging for his services.
His consultants fees.
They're charging yet? Subsidized income from like, the, never mind. You all set?
I'm, I'm good.
Okay, Bob?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, Sunday, July seventh, uh, the co-founders of Operation Home Ties, Faces to Remember, portrait artist Gina Johnson and her brother Paul Roth are pleased to announce they will partner with the Boston Marriott Burlington to host a Massachusetts Remembers event in the Grand Ballroom located at One Burlington Mall Road from ten AM until two PM. This event will showcase the unveiling of a special display of detailed pencil portraits that unite and honor the memory of all two hundred and eight Massachusetts casualties of September eleventh, two thousand and one. From ten AM to noon, the Mass nine eleven family members will be invited to gather for an informal private viewing. Starting at noon, the exhibit will open to the Gold Star families and general public. In addition, the special display, Operation Home Ties, will also have their other two tribute walls displayed at, of post eleven faces of remembrance, portraits honoring all Massachusetts military servicemen and women who have died since nine eleven, two thousand and one, and the Massachusetts Vietnam Gold Star Tribute Wall with the thirteen hundred and thirty-nine names, that's one thousand three hundred and thirty-nine names and towns of the service members who died since Vietnam. So, that's a, kinda save the date, Sunday, July seventh. Um, it, the faces, Gina was kind enough, um, at my retirement to do a collage of, of pictures, uh, that's quite stunning, but to see the faces of, of the people who have died serving us is quite extraordinary, so it's at the Marriott on July seventh, and I would recommend people stop by. Again, it's the seventh, so it's still part of the July fourth holiday week.
Fantastic, thank you.
That's it.
Okay. Um, two quick things on, uh, Chairman's report, I'm gonna go over very quickly. Uh, I'd like to take a second for all you gentlemen that ride motorcycles out there. We had a tragic incident over the weekend in New Hampshire, seven, seven people were, um, killed on motorcycles, uh, please be aware that they're out there and they're riding, they're just as nervous as you are sometimes, uh, don't know what to say. Um, I don't know any of them, never met any of them, but to see seven go in one shot is very, very difficult, probably over a mistake of texting on the phone or making a mistake, I don't know, it just hasn't come out yet, I've been waiting to see, but please, when you're on the, when you're driving that car, don't text. They have voice commands now, we have all kinds of technology we can use, uh, someone is riding a motorcycle. Now, on a little bit lighter note, September twenty-ninth, uh, the district in Burlington was nice enough to allow, um, the PCM Challenge, I think it's called, I forget the actual name, and that's terrible, cause I'm on the board. PM, what's it called? PMS Challenge, okay. So, we are running a, um, bicycle race, so not a race, just a, a mile and a half course through the district. They were nice enough to allow us to use their, uh, facility first thing in the morning, on a Sunday morning. It'll be from eight to twelve, ages two to thirteen years old, I believe it is, uh, to register, Christine and Jason Steiner, which is Christine Pharoah Steiner, uh, they're running this whole program, and I am gonna mention it every month from now until then, so get ready, all right? Um, I think it's a great cause, all, all the money goes strictly to cancer research, as we know, some of us know, some of us don't, they had a, a daughter that survived that, and I think it's a great cause. It's thirty dollars to enter your child into it, uh, for registration, it's thirty dollars that they're trying to raise, they will have a bouncy house, they'll have face painting, a few other things are coming up, and once again, I really wanna thank the district, uh, we all know where that is down in Burlington, uh, for putting this on. All right, that's all I have.
Hey, that sounds great, I like that, I like that.
I like where the money's going, you know, so, um, Paul, do you have anything?
Yes, I do. I got, uh, mostly good news, and, uh, one sort of, uh, less than good news at the end, but, uh, I'll start with the good stuff first. Uh, it's already been mentioned, uh, but we have a ribbon cutting at Fire Station Two on Wednesday at eleven o'clock, uh, brief ceremony, uh, ribbon cut, um, check the place out at that time, also, uh, again, because folks have to work, on Saturday, we have the open house down the Fire Station, uh, so, those two are already covered. Uh, next thing I wanted to point out for everybody is that we have, uh, an upcoming, uh, police exam, uh, is open, so I just, uh, it stinks to read a website, a funny website on the air, but I want everybody to hear it at home, if not, please call in, it's on the town website, or you can call the police department to get the information, uh, but that's at, uh, www dot police app dot com backslash Burlington, Mass. Again, uh, that's probably a little quick for somebody to pick up at home to read, but, um, look for that. All the information you need to apply to take the exam is there, I believe the exam's in September, the deadline, uh, so we're ready to, to give another exam, uh, for entrance to become a Burlington police officer. Yeah, the process has worked great for us, as the board has seen, uh, the quality of candidates that have, have, have come through, um, in recent years, so we got a really, a really good process there for hiring, and, uh, I just wanna open, open that up to anybody in the community who knows anyone who wants to be a police officer, uh, here in Burlington, that's the, that's the website to go to, to apply to take the exam. Uh, third thing I touched upon a little bit, uh, we're investigating, uh, grant, grant funding and private funding from utility companies to, to put in, uh, electric charging stations for vehicles, uh, the idea is in its infancy for us right now, we've made a commitment to do something out back here, uh, and we should be able to get it done, um, at virtually no cost to the town, very, very small cost, due to, uh, grants from the state level and grants from, uh, utility companies, so, uh, we will report back to you when we have more information on that. Uh, third item I have for you is, uh, we had a very productive meeting on the parking lot at sixty-one Center Street. Um, Jim, Joe, and Nick joined us, as well as a bunch of, uh, staff members and members of the planning board, uh, we walked the property, we had a very productive discussion, I think Bob and Mike, um, bagged out of that one to watch the Bruins game, but how'd that work out for you? But we had a real good discussion, and, uh, we'll be bringing, uh, a plan back to the board, um, I think there was a couple of items that we're looking into on behalf of planning board members, just to sort of see if, if, if there's potential for more spaces by doing things one way or the other, but, uh, overall, I think it was a great meeting, and, uh, we exchanged a lot of good ideas, and hopefully we can bring that, uh, to a resolution, and thank you guys for attending. I know we snuck out of there and ran home to, to, to watch our, uh, terrible hockey game, but, uh, it, overall, it worked out well.